Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm.
Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee and discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your Thosh briefing for the week on November 20th. City Council meets for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in Council Chambers in City Hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on the City Council meetings by subscribing to the Council Debrief Newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at cityofls.net. Holiday shopping is in full swing. Need a stocking stuffer? Check out the Lee Summit Marketplace located in the lobby of City Hall. It has great items like Lee Summit branded socks, Tervis tumblers, coasters, and more. Show off your Lee Summit pride. It's open 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. Curious to know more about the inner workings of the city? Here's your chance. The Citizens Leadership Academy is accepting applications. This interactive program is designed to give attendees a behind the scenes look at the inner workings of city government with facility tours and presentations from city leaders and elected officials. Sessions begin in January and conclude in April. Learn more at cityofls.net. And you can pay your Jackson County property, business, and real estate taxes at Treasury in the lobby of City Hall. Payments received at Treasury can be in the form of cash, check, or card. If you pay at City Hall, Lee Summit benefits by receiving 1% of all tax dollars collected. Treasury is open from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday with extended hours of 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. December 27th through December 29th. Drop boxes are also located outside of City Hall. Learn more at cityofls.net.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens and our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought co-responders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring so they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The co-responders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for, you know, those key words, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, then route, 914.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes, all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that, you know, can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family, their support network, who's close to you. If they're home alone, who can come over and hang out with you today? Can we lock away your sharps? Can we put up your meds? Do you need meds? Can we get you over to the urgent care to get you assessed for your medications? Some of them also are like, oh, I'm so glad you came. This made me feel so much better.
Our main goal as co-responders is to, one, get people connected to the services that they need and also divert from emergency rooms and jails.
And they almost get a different view of the police responding. That lets me know you care and the officers care.
Lee Summit Police, how can we help you?
My husband and I-
In 2020, we had 722 mental health related calls for service. 2022, by that time, 1,479. These mental health related calls for service are increasing. How we're responding to that is increasing the number of Crisis Intervention Team officers we have available as well as the number of co-responders we have available to respond on these calls.
So what I think is important for the community to know about the co-responder program is that we're here, we exist. All you have to do when you call 911 is ask for us, you know, say, hey, I want a co-responder to respond to this crisis and we'll go. I was really struggling about eight years ago. My personal journey with mental health and I met some amazing social workers and amazing programs that have helped me get to where I am today. I really couldn't see myself doing anything else. We want to help and that's what we love to do.
So at a client, we got a call, she had some suicidal ideations and she really felt that she had nobody. And, you know, in getting to know her story, getting to know who comes around and sees you, well, then we found a support person. And they responded immediately and we made a plan. I called back and checked on her in an hour and then I checked on her in two hours. We were able to get her into the additional services to where she talks to someone every week or more. I just took a person that really just thought they had nobody and nobody would show up for them and show them you do. And you'll be amazed who is in your corner if you just simply say, I need a little help.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place the speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here and Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there and he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There's standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of a street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google, so we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
I really love living in our historic downtown. I walk my dog around the shops, take her for, you know, they do pub cups at Poppy's so you can get ice cream with a little dog biscuit in it, which is her favorite thing in the world. My neighbors, we have block parties together. I just, I really like how welcoming and how vibrant it is. It's an amazing place to live. Lee Summit's a really great community. I love living here and I just wanted to try to find a way to give back, look out for my neighbors, for the community. I've always tried to be involved. Before serving on City Council, I used to volunteer with AFS, which is an organization that hosts foreign exchange students. So my husband and I have hosted kids from around the world and then also volunteered with local families and schools. In my professional life, I'm a paralegal. And then in my personal life, I enjoy reading, sewing. I'm a quilter. So I just finished a log cabin quilt that I'm going to send to my aunt out in DC. I can't claim any of our council accomplishments for myself. This is always a team effort. But I am really excited about the Farmer's Market and Event Space that we have coming in. It's still in the design phases, but I think it's going to be a really beautiful space and it's going to really continue keeping our downtown thriving. It's been in progress for a long time, but I think that people are going to really love it when it's done. I think one of my top priorities is going to be attainable housing that, for example, I've been trying to find a place for my mom in Lee Summit. And it's really challenging finding something that really works for a retiree who doesn't have a huge budget. Just trying to make it more attainable for people, no matter where they're at in their lives, to be a part of our community. Community is what we make it. Everybody should get involved in whatever way they can. Whether that's just voting or whether it's joining a board or a commission or even running for office. What do they say? The world is run by those who show up. So get involved however you can and make a difference in the community.
Welcome everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as we gather here in fellowship, we ask that you bless us with a safe, productive meeting. Let our discussions be practical and may our spirits be lifted because of the friendships we share. Please bless this group as well as those we come in contact with and keep us all safe. Amen.
Thank you. Calling to order, the City of Lee Summit Regular Session Number 56. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember DeMaro.
Here.
Councilmember Felker.
Here.
Councilmember Level.
Here.
Councilmember Edson.
Here.
Councilmember Pryor.
Here.
Councilmember Hodges.
Here.
Councilmember Shields.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez. Mayor Baird.
Here.
Before we move forward, I need to do a little agenda management. We have a recusal on one. I need to pull it off consent for that reason. This would be item number 2D, Bill Number 23-220. And I would like to put it right after Council Roundtable, even though it's the second reading, I don't want to, if somebody's waiting on that one. Let's just put it right after the Council Roundtable. Okay, then I would need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. I have a motion by Councilmember DeMaro, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. I'm missing one. Oh, can you just give a roll call, a voice? Yeah.
I'm an I.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor is an I. Please record the vote. That's unanimous, 8-0. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. As a member, item D is off. I have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Councilmember Pryor? Oh, you're logged in?
Yeah, but I don't-
All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Thank you all. That will take us to the Council Roundtable. Items of general interest, community announcements, things of that nature. Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the mayor's tree lighting this past week. It was wonderful, jam-packed, great, great turnout. And I hope that everyone that turned out for that will also turn out for Small Business Saturday that we're going to have this coming Saturday. Come and shop local for all your holiday gifts.
It's usually the downtown's biggest day, I think. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thanks. I just wanted to tell everyone Happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Do you have anything else going on this coming week?
Do I? I don't know. Do I? I don't think so, but you act like you know I do.
I do. I know. Can I say happy birthday on behalf of the council?
Oh, but that's next week. But yes, that's why-
We won't be here next week.
I know. That's why we're not having a meeting in celebration of my birthday.
We got to remember that next year. I got to keep the trend to not have a meeting on our birthday.
I will tell you, I'm here at this meeting tonight, but Donna Kelsey is with Andy Reid's wife at the Union Station for that, what's the red thing? The giving machine. So I really thought hard about skipping tonight's meeting, but I didn't because Taylor Swift is not going to be there. She did not fly into our airport today that I know of.
Thank goodness Taylor Swift's not in town. Probably half my council wouldn't be here.
I think would.
All right. Councilmember Felker?
So maybe I should give some more clarity to what she just talked about. If you all have heard of what's called giving machines, it's not here in Lee Summit, but at Union Station. It's something that's been going on now for the third year where there's a, we'll call it like a vending machine where you can put money in and you can donate money to a charity for different causes. And so there'll be like a little card that you'll get. You could give $10, $500, somewhere in some range. And there's about eight local charities, two national, international charities. I think last year, Hope House was a part of it and you'd recognize most of them. Going down to Union Station, there's two locations. Where is that? And it'll be there until June?
Yeah, that's awesome. Since we're on the topic of charities and nonprofit, yesterday, I think it's the sixth annual Community Service Appreciation Luncheon is what we're calling it. And it was founded by Carl Chinnery and got all like 10 nonprofits together just to see how they could all help each other. And it's grown to, there were over 33 groups there at John Knox. It's through Rotary, basically. They sponsor it, but they bring all the nonprofits, educational institutions, and volunteer type service organizations in the room to see how they can all help each other. And it was a wonderful luncheon and definitely included some of the nonprofits that we see before us each week or every month, from Lee Summit Social Services to Cold Water to Odeo and many, many more. So it was a nice event. All right, anything else? Very good. Then let's do this second reading of Bill Number 23-220. Councilmember Shields, would you please read that for adoption?
Absolutely. I move for adoption of Bill Number 23-220 and ordinance determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring for public use certain permanent easements and temporary construction easements for sanitary sewer, water, stormwater, and other public improvements, and all work incidental and subsidiary thereto, according, associated with the proposed North and South Summit Mill Improvements Project, authorized in the city manager and is designated to negotiate for the purpose of acquiring necessary interests in land and authorized in the city manager and is designated to institute condemnation proceedings if such interest in land cannot be acquired by purchase through good faith negotiations.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt Bill Number 23-220 by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes 7-0 with one recusal. Thank you. Okay, we have some public hearings tonight, so I'm going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of Agenda Item 4A, 2023-5928. This is a commercial rezoning and preliminary development and conceptual plan. Downtown Market Plaza, 201, 205, and 220 Southeast Green Street, 205 and 208 Johnson Street, and 200 and 202 Southeast Third Street. Lane 4 Property Group is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. You speak. You're going to have to stand and get sworn in. All right, very good. Mr. Elam, you going to start us off?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. Trying to get the piece. Yeah. Again, thank you very much. We're excited to be here tonight with the official public hearing for the Downtown Market Plaza project. We've had a lot of conversations about this, this project. There's been a lot of design work. There's been a lot of presentations publicly about it and this is another one of those major milestones for the project overall. I did want to again thank all of the council and all of our partners, the Downtown CID, our Lane 4, our design team, GLMV. All is the very large staff team that we have working on this, this project as well. They have a lot of stuff behind the scenes that really make all of this, this happen. So just I can't thank them enough for continuing to move this project forward. So I'm just going to give another, a couple of really quick updates and then I'm going to turn it over to the design team to go through the preliminary development plan presentation and then Shannon will go through the staff presentation associated with this. But just a little bit of a schedule update on the infrastructure. I know you'll see across the site, we had the groundbreaking for the infrastructure portion. The subject of the public hearing this evening is really for the market portion. So that's the stuff that we haven't broken ground on at this point. And fencing's up, structures are being ordered and they're working through that. And we've mobilized abatement for the buildings. So progress is occurring and that's a good thing. Then one of the big things that we're starting to hone in on dates for the closure of Green Street. And right now, March 1st is looking at when Green Street will be closed because we're going to start on the downstream end of the storm sewer and by that time is when we'll be up and ready. And there'll be, again, additional announcements and notification and everything out when that officially occurs as well. But March 1st is currently on the schedule. And so just looking ahead a little bit too, after this evening, you know, there's a public hearing in there. We will be back in front of City Council with GMP 2. And if you remember, was we talked through the project and kind of we're stepping through this process, getting the best pricing that we can. And that is currently scheduled to come back in January for that. So there's still additional steps after, after this evening, but again, this is a major milestone. With that, I'm going to be quiet. I'm going to go ahead and hopefully everybody's seen this video before, but it's on our website. But we think it's a great way to start this presentation off and then I'm going to turn it over to GLMV.
Need me to narrate?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And with that, I'll turn it over to GLM V.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. I feel like we really could have used that voiceover from the state of the city there. That would have been a nice touch on there.
I worked really hard on that.
Yeah. That was the only thing missing.
I've been waiting to pull it out.
Well, thank you for having us this evening. We're excited to be here to present our, our final vision for the Downtown Market Plaza. As you know, we've been working on this for over two years now, and we can see the finish line, so we're excited to, to share this with you and really start to see this project come to life. So with that being said, we're going to talk about the, the site design tonight and the building design for the public components. We'll get started with the site design, and I want to hand it over to Corey Schultz to get started from Olson Studio to talk about the site.
Good, good evening, Corey Schultz again. I'm going to run through the site, and through the video, I think when you start to look at that, to me, you see a lot of people gathering and attending events, and I think that's what it's all about, a space that's very programmed, excitement there that plays off the market. So when you look at the development of the site and starting down on Third Street, moving into it, there's, you start to come into the first space within there that we're, we're calling sort of the Wicket Garden. And all of the spaces are very programmed to, to align to different types of events that can occur, small to large, playing off the market, like I said again. So this first space is very intimate, garden look, garden-like, a lot of plants, a lot of lush landscape and everything to really give a, a certain feel. So that's through the site numbered, number two there on the, on the location. Within the plan, locations for potentially tables, coming out, having lunch, maybe an event like a wedding or something like that that we would have in there. The, the surface of it with being a hardscape, hardscape material, something that potentially you could have dances on and everything like that. As you move up into the space that is created by the city hall terrace, you move up to a location that is then programmable for different types of events, a little bit larger, concert, small, small band concerts there, maybe a little dance performance, flexible space. It has a surface of artificial turf, so a lot softer in feeling than what the Wicket Garden was that I talked about. So you start to get a different atmosphere, a different programming level there. Moving, moving through sort of the transition space between the, the front of the farmer's market and the Wicket area, there's this transition zone, really flexible for moving people, gathering people. You saw in the video, people entering the market, really engaging that space as they transition throughout the entire sort of entertainment area. And then the, adjacent to where the playground is onsite, really functioning as, as we started to look through the design of that, is how do we continue to keep people here for a longer time? And when you start to involve kids and families, it's very important that we start to bring amenities in that will be developed for them. So you start to bring in a playground where, you know, kids are there, that families could then enjoy concerts and stay longer, or eat at restaurants and stay in the downtown area longer. And then sort of the last space that I wanted to talk about is just sort of the, the Great Lawn Performance Lawn area, the function of that, larger events where we can, you know, use the market in the indoor-out.
Okay, so now we'll take a closer look at the building design. You guys are familiar with most of this. I mean, we've, we've, we've tried to keep you involved throughout the whole process, and that's one thing I meant to say at the beginning is, you know, we appreciate all the work and vision and thought that you guys have put into this project because we don't think that it would be where it is today without that. So you'll see a lot of that, that input that we've received from you in this final design. Big thing with the building layout, you know, we talked about from early on, angled connections and how we wanted to connect this back to the city hall plaza. We want everything to have that cohesive feel. We didn't want to have kind of two separate developments, if you will. You know, we, we wanted city hall and the plaza there to feel all as a part of this singular development. So that is, again, the reason why we have it angled, breaking that traditional grid that exists downtown. If we're looking at the, the plan here, the green area is the main vendor space, and flexibility is, is a component that we've been trying to keep in mind throughout the entire process. We don't want just, first and foremost, it is a farmer's market, but it, it, as you all know, is going to be so much more than that. So we want to maintain flexibility on the interior of the building. This is one layout that we're currently showing for vendors in the, in the hatched squares. It's a 10 by 10 grid that we're showing there. It can be laid out in a number of different ways, but this is just one way that we've worked with members of the CID group and the farmer's market to, to lay out the space. Currently, we're showing, I think, about 50 stalls on the interior. As you all know, and you saw in the video, we have the canopy that's covering the lawn on the exterior, so the idea is we have that indoor-outdoor connection. The farmer's market has aspirations to grow up to 100 vendors, if not more than that, so there is plenty of room to expand out into the canopy. And the reason for the canopy, again, as you know, is to, to provide that flexibility, you know, so there's, you don't have to worry about inclement weather. We can have events carry on as, as, as they are planned. In the red, you'll notice the main entry points. Those are vestibules that we have. They have the ability to be open whenever, and we can lock down the, the green space, the, the interior of the market if, say, there's an event that's happening in the lawn, but we don't want to have people roaming around the interior of the market space, but they still need access to the public restrooms. That's how we've, we've tried to keep that in mind in, in designing those vestibules. We have convenience with restrooms on both ends for any visitors. We've also provided, it's kind of tough to see on this plan, but on the, the south end of it by the restrooms, we also have a mother's room and a family restroom room, trying to keep that, that family element top of mind when we were doing the design. In the orange, we're showing a, a kitchen space. And purple, we're, we want to make sure that we had plenty of storage for any chairs, tables, any equipment that we need to have these events. So that's just a basic layout of the space. One thing I should say, well, I'll talk about it here on the elevation. So these are just some building elevations of, of the final design. The southwest elevation on the top image, that would be if you were kind of standing in the city hall plaza, looking towards the, the open lawn and the market space itself. Some of the design elements that you'll see, iconic signage with the Downtown Market Plaza. I think the naming of that is, and, and the sizing of everything is still kind of, we're working through that, but the idea is that we have that iconic signage element as a way of, wayfinding and placemaking for people. When you're down in this area, you know, you, you know exactly where you're at. You look at other successful markets across the country. If you look at Seattle, in particular, Seattle Public Market, they have some iconic signage elements like that, so we're trying to kind of carry that same design language over here. On the red, the metal panel piece that you see there on the top image, as you know, we had discussions about where the entry point should be. The entry's always kind of been on the same, same place that it's located currently, but it was a little difficult to kind of discern where that entry point was. That was the reason that we chose the red metal panel to really accent that and act as kind of a beacon for people. They know exactly where to go if there's an event happening at the market. To the right of that, you'll notice some canvas, keep things fresh. So you come maybe in the spring for the market, you come back in the summer, it might be a different canvas or a different art piece that's up there. So just trying to keep it fresh and trying to recognize local talent. The middle image is really kind of just, that's if you're at the top of the lawn, that's more back-of-house stuff, back-of-house entry into the market. And if we were to set up a, a stage for a musical event or things like that, that's kind of the view that you would have there. The, the view on the bottom is if you were under the canopy on the lawn, looking at the, the building. You can see, one thing I didn't really hit on too much was the operable doors, providing that indoor-outdoor connection. So we wanted to make sure that, that things flowed. You didn't, you didn't have a certain pinch point that you had to go to if you had any events going on, a large number of people down there. We'll go to the next slide. Next slide is the same thing, it just doesn't have the canopy in the way. The northeast elevation on the bottom, that is the view that you would have if you were coming through the back alley. And again, that's more back-of-house, but you can see we have the operable doors back there. It gives vendors or, you know, if there's a wedding reception or something, there's, there's opportunity to load everything from the back-of-house so you don't have everything in the public's view, just kind of making things messy and muddy. We wanted to keep all of that kind of hidden from the public. These are just screenshots that we took from the, the video, so you've, you've seen basically all of these, but just some images that, that really, you know, capture the, I guess, the excitement and the, just the overall feel of the design. So we have a couple aerial shots. If you look on the lower right, that's kind of if you were entering the site from Third Street. You have city hall on the left-hand side. You know, just working with Olson, they've done a really nice job of softening up the space, not to, you know, there is a lot of, of pavement, there's a lot of concrete, but they've, you know, worked through design. I think that, that they've come up with a really nice way of softening everything and making it just a place that people want to, to be. There's, or intimate spaces, you know, you have the, the open lawn where you have the large events, but like, again, on the lower right, you have the, the market lights that are there. You can see in the wickets on this page, maybe in the upper right, you can really picture a variety of different events happening there. We talked about that through the whole design processes. We wanted to provide that infrastructure for a different, different variety of events and different sizes. So you have the canopy that can have the larger, the larger events, but maybe it's a smaller wedding reception or a music recital or something that happens in that wicked area, really just providing a nice backdrop and intimate area for those performances. Lower left, you can see, I think Darren's been referring to it as kind of the bird's nest, really just gives you nice seating where people can gather, whether it's for work or coffee or just to hang out, but really gives you a nice overlook out into the lawn towards the, the market. That top-left image on this page is kind of, it's, it's a little elevated, but that's about the view that you would have if you were sitting in, in the bird's nest. So these views kind of show you really that iconic signage, really activating the space, the red panel. Another thing I didn't talk about the red panel, you know, we talked, we're working with Glenda, the Cultural Arts Manager, about how to engage artists for this. We've identified the, the canvas component that I spoke about, but we think there's also potential for a, a local artist to try to... Metal panel, you know, the idea is that it's, it's backlit, it glows at night, again, that beacon idea, but maybe it's something that a local artist can help, help develop a, a pattern or a grid or canvas or something that really speaks to the story of Lee Summit. The idea with what you're seeing here, it was kind of just a, it was a, a random idea we had, but just with agriculture, farmer's market, it's kind of an abstract cornrow kind of mow pattern that you're seeing on this one. So we'll, again, we'll work with, with Glenda and local artists to see if there's a, an idea that we can develop there that really captures the, the essence of Lee Summit, but the story, story is what we want to tell through these panels. Last slide we have here, top-left is an image that would be if you were standing under the canopy, looking back towards the city hall plaza. You can see the clock tower up there. You know, again, wayfinding and placemaking, just giving people those visual connections so they can navigate the site easily. The lower-left, you get a better view of what that canvas could start to look like. And then on the lower-right is just another overall kind of aerial of, of how everything ties together. So again, I just, I want to say thank you for having us here this evening to present the final vision for this. We are really proud of the way this has turned out, and we hope that you are too, and we appreciate all of the input and the vision that you have had for this project because we think that without that, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I just want to thank you all for that. And with that, I will hand it over to Shannon to give the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, please enter, or Shannon McGuire, please enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 20.
Please enter into the record Exhibit A, 1 through 20.
All right, so not a lot of changes since the planning commission meeting, but I, for the public interest in the educational piece of it, I will go through some of these slides. So the applicant is seeking that rezoning from a CP2 to a CBD district and a approval of a PDP to, with a conceptual layout for slightly larger 17,000 square foot farmer's market event space with that covered outdoor performance area. See from the, the aerial here, offices and retail are located north, and that area is zoned T and Z. AT&amp;T and the Red Rex thrift store are to the south, and those are zoned CP2. T and Z zoned, single-family homes across Johnson Street right here. And then the CBD zoned city hall is just to the west. So in addition to the farmer's market and outdoor performance place, the applicant is proposing to remove the Green Street, as they have stated. They are going to, we are going to convert this area to a pedestrian-friendly, walkable pavilion with amenities. Some of those amenities do include a public art, a playground, shade structures, seating areas, and programmable passive and active activities areas. This plan does provide a conceptual layout for the three pad sites, as you can see here. Pad site one is to the south, pad site two, and pad site three. And these include uses such as a hotel, restaurant, and some multifamily. As these pad sites are only shown in a conceptual format, no construction may occur on any of these sites until when our more preliminary development plans and final development plans have come before you and are approved. The neighborhood meeting was held on August 23rd here in council chambers. Twenty-three members of the public did attend that. It was held as an open format, or an open house format, and the public was invited to submit written comments. The applicant has reported that no written comments were shared by the attendees at that time. So when we talk about the... at that time. So when we talk about the design, some great detail was paid in relation to the materials used for that proposed building. Staff had many conversations with the design team and required the form of the structure and materials to be cohesive with the area and the surrounding buildings as a whole. Character and main building material found in downtown Lee Summit for commercial buildings is brick. The design of the proposed farmer's market does take that into account by incorporating principal material being that brick. In a historic context, we can start to new structures. It should never be the goal to create a new building that looks old. Rather, you should design a new building that is cohesive and draws in elements of the old and historic area. So the building did take inspiration from the historic structures around it, and the farmer's market building, as you can see here, does draw in quite a few elements from our downtown area. Some of those include to honor the historic Ice House. The proposed farmer's market building's architectural form draws heavy inspiration from the historic roof line of the building. You can see that the upper floor here has that flat pitched roof like the stone Ice House, where the first level there does have that kind of flat roof, similar to the additions that you can see on the Ice House that were added around the 1920s. Again, primary facade is brick, and that does draw a lot of inspiration from our utilitarian background that is found into the downtown Lee Summit area. So the applicant has requested the use of architectural metal panels and some extruded aluminum siding. The design standards for the downtown core area does allow for the use of architectural metal or historic metal on facades not fronting a street. The orientation of the proposed building has the entrance facade set back from southeast Green so that it is fronting on the pavilion area. This alignment does allow for the use of these materials, and it does meet the standards for the downtown core area. The proposed metal is limited to the entrance to the farmer's market building, and will provide for that prominent gateway entrance into that facility. Staff finds the use of these materials to be appropriate, and we do support their, as they're proposed. Some of the other comments that we've heard is parking. So there are 21 existing parking stalls on Green Street between southeast Second and southeast Third. Those will be removed with this project to make way for that proposed street skate pavilion area. The loss of these stalls will be negated by the addition of additional 25 parking stalls in the proposed alley behind the farmer's market and behind Pad Site 1. While still in design phase, the rebuild of Third Street and Johnson Street, there is a potential for an additional 20 on-street parallel parking stalls there as well. So this would give the potential to bring an overall increase in 24 parking stalls for the project area. Additional parking for the subject site will be provided by utilizing existing parking, public parking, the parking garage, public parking lots, as well as on-street parking. There are 314 parking stalls directly across the street in the City Hall parking garage. There are an additional 781 parking stalls within a three-to-seven-minute walk, as you can see with this map. That gives us a total of 1,095 parking stalls that are available within that short walk. Over half of those are available within a three-minute walk. So... And with the parking, so the main users of the parking garage are during the week, weekday business hours, our City Hall employees. Patrons of the proposed farmer's market will be utilizing the parking garage largely on the nights and weekends. In the downtown area, vehicle parking requirements apply only to a net increase in floor area created by new construction. So between the three existing buildings, the site currently has about 19,000 square feet of existing floor space. The proposed farmer's market is just over 17,000 square feet, so that is a reduction of about 1,700 square feet. So considering the complementary peak usage times between the uses in the area, the decreased floor area and the ample amount of public parking in the area, a shared parking model is a... The Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map does identify the subject site, future land use as an activity center downtown. The downtown activity center does promote development that is characterized by its pedestrian-friendly nature, and really kind of discourages that auto-focused uses. The comp plan characterizes our downtown as the traditional core and heart of the community, and really does promote a walkable access to downtown amenities, especially for our residents that are in our nearby neighborhoods. By advocating for additional public services and increasing housing options in the downtown activity center, this plan does seek, and seeks to increase ability for additional residents to live, work in downtown, as well increase patronage of our local business parks and our downtown events. The proposed PDP took all these into account during the design phase and has really strived to meet or exceed these establishments. So in addition, or to continue providing the high-quality services our citizens have come to expect, the Comprehensive Plan establishes the goal of sustaining and enhancing existing and future city services and facilities. The market project will enhance the community's attractiveness and provide for a desirable place to live, work, and visit. The mix of proposed uses will give additional meaning to the proposed building and area of town by providing that sense of place that we all love. Our public facilities do allow for the community to grow and prosper in a sustainable direction. And the comp plan does seek to create that community that celebrates, welcomes, and supports cultural and recreational amenities. Parks, recreation, and cultural resources are critical to achieving the finest quality of life in a safe, fun, and healthy environment. Established objectives in the comp plan for achieving this goal is to increase the number of residents within a half-mile of a park. So the proposed plan does meet this goal by adding those cultural parks and recreational amenities within our downtown. Targets were established by the comp plan to help track the progress toward meeting the plan's goals. One of these targets sets the goal of adding 950 acres of walkable amenities within the five established activity centers. While this particular PDP is just a small percentage of that goal, it does represent a substantial step forward, and will provide a significant momentum on the way to achieving that goal. A further goal that was established by the comp plan does call for increasing the funding for projects and plans related to art, culture, festivals, and celebrations. The Lee Summit Cultural Arts Plan that was adopted in 2007 and updated in 2006 guides the city's investment in culture. The city's Cultural Facilities Survey indicated that 96% of our residents thought there was a need for additional arts and cultural facilities. Respondents to that survey did identify the top three types of spaces they would like to see, and those included spaces that are high-quality acoustics, large stage, and a large lobby or recreation area. So the proposed dual purpose of the farmer's market and event space, along with the outdoor performance venue, will achieve this long-established goal by meeting these needs. The applicant is seeking approval of two modifications. First modification, in order to create a more dynamic facade, they did include the use of fiber cement panels on the second floor of the proposed building. Additionally, the use of this material, so this material does help reduce the weight and structural load on the facade, allowing for the interior design to remain open without having a bunch of structural support on the inside. So the use of the lap siding and cementitious panels, wall panels, is consistent with the style and materials used in the surrounding area. The requested modification is substantially similar to modifications granted to the Ellis Glen and Elevate 114 projects in downtown. So staff does find the justification to be reasonable, and we do support the requested one. Second modification is one you've heard a few times, that is to the minimum plant size requirement. This request stems from the availability of locally-sourced materials. Large plant sizes that are required by the UDO are typically not readily available in the local market. In addition to the scarcity, the larger plant sizes don't always survive the transplanting process, as well as some of the smaller sizes that they are requesting. So again, this request is substantially similar to modifications granted to other recent projects, and for those reasons, staff does find it to be reasonable and does support the requested modification. So with the conditions of approval as outlined here in the staff letter, the application does meet the goals of the Ignite Comprehensive Plan, the requirements of the UDO, and the Design and Construction Manual, and this concludes my presentation. I can yield for any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Lot of information there. Thankfully, we've seen parts of this before, most of it before, but visuals like that are really helpful. So we'll start off with questions. Councilmember Shields?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to start by thanking staff and all of the third-party architects and engineers, and everybody's worked on this. It's a really fantastic design. I know we're all very excited for it. So I had just a couple of quick questions. The drive that goes behind the farmer's market building, kind of that alley, I think there had been some discussion at some point about how wide that was going to be. Is it going to be as wide as we want it to be?
The quick, easy answer is yes.
Okay, so you're happy with how it turned out? Okay, wonderful. And then my other question was about the parking signage, especially with how important the public parking garage is going to be. Is there going to be any new signage designating that as public parking, or helping to wayfinding, showing people where that is, highlighting it for them?
Yes, so we're early in those conversations, but there will be additional conversations with regards to the design of the wayfinding and parking to direct people where they need to go.
I feel like that garage has been underutilized up until now, and I really, I really hope we can do more to make that really visible. So I am really excited for this. I'm so glad we're moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll echo Councilmember Shields and say thank you so much, but also I'm a little bummed that everyone's going to find out about my secret parking place, which is the parking garage, because it's never full, so I'm always able to park there. But I know that we've gotten a few comments about, we recently received an email about the farmers or people having a booth, being able to load and unload. Can you go back to that one slide where it was color-coded? It was more in-depth, like showing where the booths are. And then can you point out where everyone's going to be able to load and unload, or at least the vendors are going to be able to load and unload?
I can probably do that from here. So loading and unloading is going to be, I can get there. Yeah. Loading and unloading will take place from the alley. They will load in through the backside of the farmer's market. All the doors on the backside do roll up so we can load straight in. They will load their merchandise in, and then they will park their vehicles off-site.
Okay, so...
Can you use your mouse and show us? I know what you were saying, but I just wanted...
Right. So all the loading and unloading will take place in the back alley along here. The doors along this side, as well as the doors on the north side here, do roll up, so all loading can come through those doors as opposed to a single access point.
There'll be multiple access points along this alleyway right here?
For loading, yes.
Okay. And then, is that the only, there won't be, on this far side, there won't be any?
Here or back here?
No, yeah.
So there are access points back here. Primary, the loading will come from the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Could you show her the, we had a visual of the backside, and it is all garage doors on that side?
Okay, yeah. And I know that, we've just, I just wanted it to, I just wanted it addressed publicly on where it's going to be, just because we have gotten a few of the questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Felker. There we go. There's the, there's the backside right there.
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess in line with that questioning, just, there's no concern about space to load and unload, and I think that was the question that was asked of Mr. Elam, that drive around the corner, you know, just looking at it from an aerial view, I don't know how big or small that is.
Yeah, so we're in active negotiations to make that area a little wider back there, and once we're able to complete those negotiations with that, I think everybody's going to be very happy with there. But essentially, that drive aisle is going to get larger, and there will be additional parking spaces along that back alley area as well, which provides a couple of different benefits. They're not shown in this plan set right now, but they're currently being updated in the plans. But we'll be able to have, you know, maybe a vendor that's, you know, say, I always hear about the watermelon or the pumpkins, you know, something that's typically in a truck. We'll be able to have those doors open right out to a couple of spots in there, and so that'll make that area a whole lot more functional.
What could be done? Will there be anything done? What you're talking about is having some additional space across, if you will, facing the garage doors there. So what, I'm visualizing this incorrectly, but what would be done to maintain those spaces, or those who are actually participating in the farmer's market? I mean, is that, will they be reserved in any way?
Yeah, that'll be a management signage type of issue for these stalls back here, but the market load-in will occur very early in the morning, and it'll have to be managed. You can see on here for this parking lot, we are including gates. That'll have the ability to close off for special events. But the stalls along this side here, that'll all be part of a load-in, load-out process. That will have to be managed.
So another different question goes back to parking and the parking garage. There was a comment made about daytime parking and the garage being mostly utilized by staff currently, and obviously into the future. And I just triggered a thought with what I'm thinking about, which is, I mean, part of what we talked about earlier is this space, we don't want to just utilize it for evenings and weekends, but daytime programming as well, for those who, whatever function or event might make sense for that. So I guess that's, a thought is okay, or if we're concerned about parking for daytime events. Obviously, yes, we've got lots throughout the city. Part of me just wonders, what's the utilization? Like, yes, we have this, but what of this is all, like, do we have something that says, here's our number of spaces, and here's how they're currently used at present, and what, you know, what degree of capacity do we have? Doing daytime programming at the farmer's market and the event space, does that create a strain on the parking garage because we have city staff already using it? So Mr. Park perhaps, or Mr. Elam, either one?
Yeah, so I'll let Michael answer this, because I think he's got some fresh information to share.
Great.
Michael Park, Director of Public Works. So we're very confident there's plenty of capacity to accommodate this public space that we're creating, even if it's programmed throughout the day while most of its use is City Hall or other businesses that work, you know, eight to five. Last inventory, and we just did another data collection, we haven't finished processing that, but anecdotally, I can tell that it's not as utilized as it was the previous time we did a downtown parking study.
Garage?
The garage, yes, excuse me, make sure I'm focused on the right area. The garage at that time, in the last data collection, which was about 2016, had over 100 spaces that just weren't used. And that's conservative, where we look at the peak demand hour by hour throughout the day, every day of the week, and match it up to say, this hour of this day and this peak use on a different day, this is the most conservative. There was always 100 spaces available. And some of those, yes, we programmed when Elevate came in, and it got approved, and it needed a little bit of shared parking from the public supply, but it didn't take that much demand. And as we've seen, they haven't utilized that demand, and I believe they're near full occupancy. So we're very confident that it has enough space, public space, to meet the demands of this public project for the farmer's market and the active space, the performance venue, which obviously is more compatible with the times of its current usage at the garage.
Thank you. I appreciate that. One other, just, and for the purposes of coming in Green Street from Second, that's going to be one-way in. Am I correct or no? Okay. It's two-way, in and out. Okay.
Yes, yeah, this is, this is two-way and out. This will be essentially how it functions today.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for the clarity on that. And then this, not sure if this is the venue, or the, excuse me, the right place to ask this question, but just in general, we talk about it being an event space and farmer's market. I mean, from the city staff perspective, how does this envision being managed? Like, the city doesn't have the same kind of, aside from Parks and Rec, and they're kind of managing their event spaces and so forth. What's envisioned in terms of how and who, perhaps, Department? so forth. What's envisioned in terms of how and who, perhaps department-wise and so forth, this will be taken care of in the future?
So when we went out for the original RFQ for a master developer, we also put the RFQ out for a manager on that. And we've been working with Biederman Redevelopment Ventures through that, that process now. They've been part of the project team in a consulting type of basis, and they've, they've actually put together, they're working on a draft operations and management agreement and plan overall. But the current thought process is that a separate entity that will actually be contracted by the 353 Redevelopment Corporation that has been set up for this managing entity.
So, okay. So what I, let me just recap that. So what, the proposal now, not in front of us, obviously, right, distinct from this, is there may be a third party that would actually manage this as opposed to the city?
Correct.
And again, that may be a little bit out of bounds with what we're actually assessing. So I appreciate you indulging the question.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you. Okay, so just for a little clarity, you said that there will be spots, like, for people with, like, the big loads, like watermelons and pumpkins and all of that stuff. Will they be able to back their truck or van to the, will they be able to back it there and then unload directly and leave it there? Oh, good. Okay, that makes me so much happier. And then also, so some of my favorite parking garage on the Kansas side, like at Prairie Fire, they have the lights that tell you if they're green or red, like if the parking garage is full or not. Is that something that we could explore doing or?
We're looking into those options. You know, one of the things that we would like to avoid is, you know, if the garage is full, we don't want to send any additional traffic here if we don't, we don't have to. But there's some new technology available that we're looking at. Have those details?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll just make a couple of comments or maybe kind of questions. Go to the Farmers Market and the restrooms? So, Mr. Elam, yeah, that's fine right there. Right now, really, the public doesn't have access to our restrooms or anything like that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Currently, I believe they have a single porta potty, the current Farmers Market.
Yeah. So we've got it on both ends, and it looks like there's quite a few stalls in each of them. On the, on the brick on the outside, it looks like you have used a combination or different colors. I guess this is for the architects. And have you finalized the pick? I like the way it looks. I'm just asking, have you finalized it? Have you brought it up and put it up against maybe our building and things like that?
We, I don't know that we've put it up. Are you talking against City Hall in particular?
Yeah, it'll be across from City Hall, so that's why I was wondering.
I don't know that we've put it up against City Hall. I haven't personally. I don't think, but we have had the, we had several samples, if you remember back. Oh, gosh, I don't even know when this was.
I do. I just, I couldn't remember if you had picked one or?
We did pick one. It was, there was a consensus of one blend that everybody liked. So it is a blend. It's not just a solid.
Right. So the bricks will have different, they'll have different shades and one a little bit darker and?
It should, I mean, we, we think that it picks up on, I mean, there's a lot of brick down here, but there's a lot of different tones of brick. And we think that this blend kind of captures all that.
Brings it all together. Okay, good. Okay, on the, on the parking, I'll start with you on this, and then I'll go to maybe Mr. Park or something. But as a professional, like, I'm really noticing how different my behaviors are when I come downtown versus my kids' behaviors. They're, and they're in their mid-20s now. They all load up at my house or someone's house and jump in one car and head downtown. Are you seeing this trend across the board with that age group? Is it, is it making a difference? Can you give me anything on that, or do I need to go to Mr. Park?
I don't know. I don't have any, any insight on that.
Oh, it's a tough question, but it's just.
Yeah, no, it's a good question.
I think it's something that we need to start looking at. There's, they, they all load in one car. If they want to, if they don't want to go back to that, they want to go straight home, they Uber home. It's just really intriguing that they literally plan their whole night.
I probably made similar observations just in personal life, you know, who, like you said, who shows up at the house and they carpool around. But I don't have any data yet, like publications to reference that show that through study. That might be a reflection of what, you know, I mentioned. You know, I look at the garage now compared to 2016 when we did our data collection. And my observation is that, yeah, it's less utilized. That's probably similar. We'll see what the surveys had shown from our data collection most recently. But if we're seeing less parking, more people, obviously, they got to be carpooling.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, where I'm going with this is, and I think the architects know, just making sure that we have good drop-off locations for them. So when you look at this, what do you picture as far as drop-offs and such? You know, what's a good point where you think people will probably be doing that? Is that in the, right on Green Street, right by the parking garage, or what do you, what do you picture?
Well, I think we'll see some of that right in Green Street. There, we are creating loading zone on the east side of the driveway, so if they were to circle in, say, coming in off the alley.
Show me on the map, please.
See my cursor here?
Yeah.
So right in here is a loading.
A loading, okay. That's what I'm asking right now.
Additional loading zone is proposed down here off of Third Street, which is really where we get a lot of through traffic. And again, we're creating this gateway. We're trying to drive that traffic, that foot traffic in particular, from downtown into this space. And so we already have an existing loading zone right here, and I believe another one's over here. So we're kind of, we're creating these spaces for loading and unloading, whether it's Lyft, Uber, whoever it is.
I really, yeah, I was really more concerned about this area right beside the, the event space.
Yeah. So we wanted to protect, obviously, the efficiency and the operation coming in the driveway, but we felt comfortable in that it's a safe operation to put that loading and unloading right adjacent, immediately adjacent to all this activity. And so some of that will happen here. Other than that, you know, I could see them pulling in, dropping off, turning around in the garage itself.
Makes sense. Okay. I just, I just want, I just think that that's, it's wise to plan for that, because it's just going to be more of that, more of the.
We see a lot of that during Oktoberfest and downtown days. They kind of pull through, they unload, and then they continue driving. Whether they pull into the garage at that point, find a parking spot, or they, they go elsewhere to find a parking spot.
Very good. Other questions from council? All right. All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to the application? Please come forward. All right. Are there any additional questions from the council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? All right. Very good. Hearing no for the testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Edson.
Yeah, I'm excited. I can't wait to see it. Can't wait for it to be done. I think that'll be great. It'll be a great addition. But I do appreciate the design team taking all our comments into consideration. I know you did that. I appreciate you all reaching out and being a real partner on this. So, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I can tell you this. We see, we've seen a lot of presentations over the last few years and some really quality developments. We've seen a lot of really nice renderings and even a few fly-throughs, but I don't think any of the renderings we've seen have been as good as yours by, I mean, by a large margin. And I don't think there's been a fly-through of high quality that gives us a really clear picture like that. And we've seen some, people spend some money. So you guys have done a phenomenal job of, of creating a picture and showing us that you're thinking through every single aspect and showing us what we're going to get, you know. It, it's very exciting and it's comforting, because, you know, you're taking out the question marks for us. You're providing details that, that we don't have to, have to worry about. So, so thank you for all the work. I know that the staff has spent considerable time with you all, Lane Four as well, Mr. Dunning, like, a lot of work in this, a lot of meetings. Do you want to make any comment with regard to just what's gone into this?
I would say comprehensive in the sense of numerous stakeholders involved from downtown Main Street, downtown CID, just a number of stakeholders for this public project and very, very complimentary of everybody that's working.
Chair of CID, CID here, I see. Thank you for coming. Yep, means a lot. Okay, then we're going to move, move on to the actual bill here. Councilmember, who gets the honor? Oh, Councilmember Edson. Would you please read Bill Number 23-221?
I'd be honored to, Mayor. And can I say that ordinance does not reflect the excitement that we have for this project?
It's hard in the public hearing. We were, you're not supposed to, you know, gush about the, you know, whatever's in front of you. We kept our cool, and now it's time to gush.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, Bill Number 23-221, an ordinance approving rezoning from District CP2 to District CBD and a preliminary development plan for the Downtown Market Plaza on approximately four acres of land located at 201, 205, and 220 Southeast Green Street, 205 and 208 Southeast Johnson Street, and 200 and 202 Southeast Third Street, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33 Unified Development Ordinance, the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Very good. Thank you. We have motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 23-221, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember DeMoral. Discussion? I do want to say one real quick thing, that this presentation and the wayfinding that you're referring to on the parking, if we could maybe talk more about that. That map that you provided of all those public parking spaces that Mr. McGuire provided was really kind of eye-opening, and I'd really love to maybe have some council discussion around that. I think we'd find support for taking, you know, a real comprehensive approach, not just the parking garage, so. All right. Seeing no for the discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes 8-0. Thank you all. Thanks for all being here. Hey, we've got another public hearing. This one, we're going to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the, in the matter of a preliminary development plan. Chick-fil-A Drive-Thru Expansion, 690 Northwest Blue Parkway. Chick-fil-A Inc. is the applicant. With all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. Oh, yeah. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to note that I will be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest from participation in the discussion and the vote. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Lance Spencer, 690 Northwest Blue Parkway in Lee Summit. I'm with Chick-fil-A and want to say Happy Thanksgiving. Any holiday centered around eating poultry is a great holiday in my book, so thanks. Hope it's a good week for you guys. My wife Courtney and our three kids call Lee Summit home. And just a little, personally, I started as a team member in 2007 and now serve as the local owner-operator for Chick-fil-A here in Lee Summit. The restaurant opened in 2012, and similar to this city as a whole, it's been a great decade of growth. You know, I believe a rising tide lifts all boats, and it's certainly been our, our, our story. Our organization currently employs 130 team members and has a leadership team of 20, and those people are the best part of my job. To further equip this leadership team and our pursuit of a high-performing organization, I purchased an administrative office in 2019 at Woods Chapel in 291 there at Eastport Office Complex. We leverage this space to solve problems and have, and solve capacity issues, such as the discussion that we're having today. So office in District Three live in District Two and the restaurants in District Three. So if you'll allow me to start, let me frame up kind of the discussion of how we got here today. What have we done so far? I'm going to outline some of the hurdles the business has overcome to serve our community better and more efficiently and give them the gift of time. Our business reality is this. Consumer preferences and behavior have shifted significantly over the last couple of decades. Customers continue to demand convenience. We've seen this in retail with Amazon, and we see it in the restaurant space as well. So the percentage of meals eaten on-site in my dining room in 2017 was 25%. That has continued to decline in year-to-date, where only at 11% of meals that we serve are eaten inside of our dining room. So that trend in 2017, one in four were eaten on-site, and now it's about one in 10 are eaten on-site. This is a huge increase in drive-thru sales. So the building design of 2012 has been completely overhauled by our design teams three or four times since then. So let me outline some of the hurdles that come with that. The first is the speaker box or the two-way radio. It's woefully insufficient. So we've overcome that through an innovation of iPad order-taking. And so depending on business demands, we will have maybe two to ten, two to 10 team members working outdoors. And so a key part of this project is installing canopies to protect them from the elements, the exact same thing as the Downtown Market Plaza. From 2015 to 2023, using iPads, our average peak hour car count increased by 78%. So at that time, I knew the site needed some adjustments. And in researching and reflecting on this, I saw my first email for this issue was sent on April 17th of 2017. I knew we needed to tweak the site. And over the last six and a half years, over 50 people have contributed to us getting the project before you today. We've had multiple Zoom calls with Development Services, and they've been great to work with. The second hurdle that we've had to overcome is insufficient operational space. The innovation here was creating efficient workstations for our team. In January of this year, we closed for two weeks for a construction project, and our building was one of the first in the country to receive an expanded, parallel drive-thru cockpit. Historically, our team members worked in about 50 square feet there at the window, and now we have 300 square feet for them to operate efficiently, as well as a door to walk out and deliver food to the vehicles. Did anyone see the Formula One race in Las Vegas over the weekend? So we actually use Formula One as a benchmarking case study for how they do pit stops. They do pit stops in like two seconds. So we're thinking through how, how we can make it as efficient as possible for our guests. The third hurdle that we've run into and why we're here today is inadequate exterior space dedicated to our drive-thru customers. Our current state is one lane of meal delivery around the building. This means that it is very dependent. Traffic flow is completely dependent on the first car receiving their food. If the food is not ready for the first car in the drive-thru line, it will not move, as long as they're at the window. So it creates a bottleneck and backs up to the entrance of our lot. So here's the key innovation, and it's the proposal that's outlined before you today. It's the best solution that we have possible, given our site constraints. It really is the final piece of the puzzle for us. Quite, quite simply, we've done everything else that we can do. In Kansas City as a whole, we have 16 Chick-fil-A restaurants, and 14 of them have canopies to protect their team members. So we're one of only two that doesn't. And then out of 2,300 restaurants nationwide, there's only 185 that don't have these canopies yet. So we're one of the 8% that's yet, yet to receive them. As far as the second lane around the building, an identical project has been approved at our sister restaurant in Lenexa, and they'll do their construction in January. So this proposal significantly improves traffic flow and flexibility. The benefits of this second lane all around are really, we've got the flexibility to run it in two ways. The first is to keep both lanes open at all times. It helps the restaurant queue more cars in delivery by pulling the lane further around the building. And this capability gives access to more cars that can be delivered closer. That shortens the amount of walking space that our team has to, has to use. The other way is have a single lane fulfillment and then kind of a bypass lane. Think about the highway where the left lane's the passing lane. So we would essentially do that in our drive-thru, where you'd reserve one spot. So if we had the, the third car's food ready, they could pull off. a meal is delivered, the car can exit without waiting for the car in front of them. This increases efficiency and movement through the drive-through. So, that's a little bit of the overview of the project. I'd like to invite our engineer, Jack Maney with GBC Design, who came in from Ohio, to share some specifics about the project. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thanks for hearing us tonight. My name is Jack Maney. I'm with GBC Design, address 8734 Spruce Land, Marshaville, Ohio. So, what you're seeing here, as Lance mentioned, this is something that Chick-fil-A is issuing, spending some, some reinvestment in their existing stores, recognizing that there is some efficiency problems with the drive-through. Stores are outgrowing the original designs. So, the lane widths, the striping, the canopy placement, everything that we are proposing here is typical that they're rolling out across the country. The new stores get this same design, same lane width, same placement of the canopy in the drive-through with the thought that the, the order timing, to when the order is getting sent back to the kitchen, it's just a continuous movement as the team members are fulfilling the orders as they get to the drive-through window, which is now actually a full-functional operational door where they're walking in and out and hand-delivering the meals to the second lane. There is the striping down the center, that is three feet, that's for team member safety. We have striping up against the building, which is two feet, which is also the team member safety for those delivering those meals. The canopies are equipped with lights for evenings, fans for warm weather months, heaters for cold. Obviously, the, the canopy will suit as some shade from the sun, or if a light missed, rain, what have you. And then, the menu boards are still there. You can still go in off, off-peak hours if there isn't a team member out there to assist you. You can still place your order like you, you would normally. And then, the, the canopies allow for those team members with those iPads to kind of be out there and, and meet you as you enter the drive-through and get that order in a little quicker. Essentially, just making the drive-through more efficient and getting the customers through safely. And I think that Lance did a great job covering everything, and I can, when we get to the part where there's questions, I can answer any technicals about it. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Shan McGuire, Senior Planner, please enter in the record, Exhibit A, List of Exhibits, sorry, the wrong set, one through 18.
Okay, please enter into the record, Exhibit A, List of Exhibits, one through 18.
All right, so the applicant did do a pretty good job of explaining the project, and nothing has really changed since the planning commission, so I'll try not to be too redundant here with my presentation. As you can see, the, the subject site does sit at the southwest corner, Northwest Blue, and Southwest Southern Crossing. This is the southern entrance to the Summit Fair Shopping Center, and all four corners are developed as commercial uses. They are proposing, as they stated, to expand the drive-through from a single-line pickup facility to a dual-line pickup facility. They are trying to increase that drive efficiency, vehicle queuing, to alleviate those, those backing issues that they, they spoke about. There is no expansion of the existing building associated with this project. The proposed expansion does require a modification, and that's why they're here before you today. I'll get into more detail on that here in a later slide. They are proposing to remove eight of the existing parking spaces along the west side of the building to accommodate that proposed drive-through improvements. So, the UDO does encourage the use of alternate, alternative, alternate parking plans in order to tailor parking needs to a particular site. So, the applicant has commissioned a, a parking study and to determine the using, usage of parking spaces during lunch and dinner, peak hours, in order to document and provide justification for the reduction of the, the overall parking out there. The study did show the peak usage of the parking spaces for the Chick-fil-A during the study period was 27 spaces. That means there's 40 spaces that are unused during their peak time. So, based on that, removal of the eight spaces does not pose a significant issue or will not negative, will not negatively impact the ability for the site to accommodate the needed parking. So, for those reasons, staff does support that modification. And as you can see, this is a, just a comparison of the existing site. As you can see, that it's a dual-lane order lane, but then it does go down to that single lane here, and they are proposing the dual lane all the way through. Getting into that modification, the widening the existing drive lane facility by 12 feet to provide that second lane does result in an encroachment into the required 20-foot parking lot setback from the public right-of-way. Although, the drive-through lanes will maintain about a seven and a half, a little over a seven and a half foot setback from the right-of-way at its closest point, the nearest, uh, drive lane of Blue, uh, Blue Parkway travel lanes will be located approximately 18 and a half, almost 19 feet away from that drive lane. Between the drive lane, um, Parkway, um, the facility will have, have grass, a five-foot sidewalk, as well as some landscape areas to provide that buffer. This will provide a visual and physical buffer between the street and the drive-through. Staff does support the modification request for the reduced parking lot setback from that public right-of-way. And the public hearing was held on September 13th. Three attendees, attendees did attend. Those were representatives from Olive Garden, Red Lobster, and Chick-fil-A. So, a couple of the, the topics that were discussed were the access improvements, as well as the process that they're going through. But with the conditions as of approval, as outlined here and in the staff letter, the applicant does, application does meet the goals of the Ignite Conference of Plan and the requirements of the UDO, as well as the requirements of the Design and Construction Manual, and I can yield for any questions at this time.
Very good. Thank you. Questions from Council? Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, so I feel like I'm speaking on behalf of probably all of Lee Summit when I ask this, but do you guys have any plans for a second location? Because I feel like South Lee Summit, probably District One, kind of like near Rain Tree-ish would be a really good location.
I don't know that, Mr. Head.
So, we, we need to, that's, that's not a comment about this.
Okay, I can't ask that yet, but I'll ask it later.
Yep. You can, you can ask it later afterwards. I mean, after we get out of the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we can't make a decision based on that. I like, I like your train of thought. Is it, Mr. Head, isn't it a, is it a conflict of interest if you frequent Chick-fil-A often? Because I'm, I'm, I'm having a lot of conflict up here.
I don't think that quite rises to a legal conflict of interest, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. I, I have, I have a couple of questions. I'm not seeing councilmembers jump up, so I'll, I'll, I don't usually lead off, but, uh, this, this makes sense, and it's based on the fact that if the first person is at the door waiting, it, it creates a bottleneck. And being a frequent Chick-fil-A consumer, what can I ask about, since we're making this modification, what have you thought about on the exit? So, as you see that on that screen there, the red car, sometimes you, you, really, there's two lanes there right now where you're coming in, and so, a lot of times, they get trapped. You've got that, all those stalls as a, as a drive-through, but then they still have to wait to get out. So, have you talked to staff about that, about any, any other variants that you might consider?
Yeah, so we've already have the reduction of, of parking, and so, the, the conversation was to preserve as much parking as, as we could. Practically speaking, I mean, and that's where I talk about the, the business changing. Practically speaking, you know, I've, I've never seen us run out of parking spots. We've got complimentary, you know, our neighbors there have plenty of parking as well, and they don't, they don't use it all. So, the exit isn't as much of a concern that we've seen.
Really?
Once, yeah, once they have their food, I mean, there's, there, there's a, a hot fry in their mouth and they're exiting, so.
Well, the, what I'm saying is they get stuck right there. That's where they, and I'm guessing people are just courteous and let people out. Is that what happens?
So, like, you're, you're saying the, the car that's exiting essentially headed west?
The red car, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually, there's two lines going, you guys are so popular, there's two lines already formed at this point, and so, you go through those parking stalls to get out, but then you get stuck here because at the entrance, there's a couple of, of cars there that have already doubled up. Is there anything, well, how do you guys usually handle that? I mean, during the holidays, you have to be slammed.
Yeah. So, business is pretty consistent, but the key is to keep the line moving forward and not have the gaps in between the cars. Our drive-through director Alexandra is here, and she, that's her, her day in and day out. So, to reduce the gaps, it's really about flow, getting a better flow in the parking lot, not necessarily adding queuing capacity.
Okay.
And so, that would help. If we could improve the flow, it, that's the idea of the project is, is it's, it would, it would help that, that, that exit.
I mean, that, that, that makes sense. Just, I, I'd be for losing a couple more parking spots and, you know, and, well, I'm not really for or against anything right now. It's a public hearing. I'm just asking questions right now. So, um, okay. Councilmember, or Mayor Potem Lopez?
Thanks, Mayor. So, allegedly, I think one of my cars is always going through this drive-through to frequenting, frequenting this store also. But I guess I do have a serious question. Is this the concept you're wanting to, you're proposing, is that similar to your store in Liberty?
Exactly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got two lanes all around.
Yeah, and the canopy.
Yep, exactly.
Over it also, yeah. So, I, I've seen that, and it does, would definitely improve the flow here.
Yeah.
No doubt.
Yep.
But to the mayor's point about parking, um, I ask this often when there's retail kind of developments involved. I'm assuming, and I saw on your public hearing, you had two neighbors there that, two corporate neighbors were there present. Is there cross-easement parking throughout this?
Yeah, we have a shared parking agreement with them.
Shared parking?
Yeah.
And so, uh, so there was no concerns or questions about during your peak times, uh, your neighbors, you impacting your neighbors' parking opportunities? Were there patrons?
So, I mean, the, the more, the bigger discussion was the traffic flow, was, was, was will it improve, improve traffic flow? Practically speaking, we don't ever have an issue with insufficient parking, similar to the downtown parking garage. It's not necessarily a capacity issue, it's more of a
The flow.
Easement and traffic flow issue is what we're, what we're more dealing with, and that's what we're trying to solve here.
Okay. And as the mayor said, where that red car is there on the picture to the left, are you gonna widen that corridor there, that stretch at all?
So, as part of it, we will reduce the island. If you can see, this, this island here is gonna be reduced as much as we can. So, I think it's a four feet that, that it's being reduced to allow for, for a little more space there upon the exit.
That could help. That's all I have for now, Mayor. Thank you.
I'm, I'm glad you said that, because I was, that's what I was getting at, is can we reduce these little islands to create more space so that you can exit? But it sounds like you've already addressed that to a degree, so. Very good. Okay, is there anyone that wishes, uh, that is here that wishes to speak in opposition or in favor of the application? Please come forward. Are there any additional questions from the council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? All right. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Edson?
I just want to say that I found out tonight, I'm part of the 11%.
11%. I knew that was coming. I knew that.
I, I really go through the drive-through.
Oh, I know.
I, the food's hot if you eat it there, yeah. I just wanted to add that.
And I've been there 100 times, and I've never gone in once. I'm sorry, haven't been inside.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pryor, you gonna ask your question?
I am gonna ask my question. And also, I do go through the drive-through a lot because I have young kids, well, they're older now, but they beg to go into the play area, and then I have to end up staying there forever. So, it's just so much faster to go through the drive-through. So, I'm one of the drive-through people. But do you plan, basically, the same question as earlier, do you plan on a second location at all?
I could address that. My name is Michael Lewis, at 5200 Buffington. I'm with the Support Center from Chick-fil-A on the real estate. And yes, I confirm, we are actively looking at additional opportunities in, in Lee Summit to help balance the, the flow of, of customer demand here.
Do you have any indication on where it's gonna be?
I know, I don't. I'm, unfortunately, no. I mean, we have a, a site that we're actively looking at, but it's still a little too early on to start.
Well, that's exciting. I know a lot of people in a lot of the community groups that people post, they're always like, oh, we need a second Chick-fil-A location. There was a rumor for a while it was gonna be next to Home Depot, but I don't know whatever happened to that. But yeah, so, that's exciting. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. I was gonna ask a question before we vote on this. Hold on one second, it's coming to me. Oh, it's, it's, I had a really good question that you would have, you guys were gonna enjoy, but I've lost it. I've lost it. Um, oh, I know what it was. So, what's your last name, sir, again?
Mr. Spencer.
Mr. Spencer. You said this was the last rendition. That's what you said, you said last rendition. What are you gonna do when there's drones and you're flying them out the window and things like that in about 10, 15 years? I mean, you gonna, are you gonna modify and adapt, or are you gonna?
Of course, of course, yeah. I mean, we've got a whole innovation center in Atlanta, and so, I'm on a panel that discusses future innovation and building prototypes. So, imagine a warehouse full of restaurants, life-size restaurants that are made out of foam core board, and we invite customers and everyone poke and prod and say, does this work? And if it doesn't work, it's just foam core board, it's not actual, an actual building. So, we've got foam core, and then in addition to that, two fully-built-out operational restaurants. They just don't have a ceiling, so you look up and there's a warehouse. So, innovation is key. I mean, one of our core values is continuous improvement, so that'll certainly happen. I think the first restaurant just announced in Florida, they're testing drone delivery, so hopefully it's not too far away.
Love it, love it. Continuous improvement, core value, that's, that's us, too. Thank you. Councilmember Pryor?
Sorry. Um, out of all of the Chick-fil-A's, is Lee Summit one of the busier ones in the area? Is it? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, how about this? Where am I? I am to Councilmember Demoro. Would you please read Bill Number 23-222?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, Bill Number 23-222, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Chick-fil-A located at 690 Northwest Blue Parkway, all in, all in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 33 Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill Number 23-222, by Councilmember Demoro, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes eight to zero with one recusal. Thank you for investing in Lee Summit. Okay, I've got one more public hearing that we just need to continue, but I need to close the regular session and open the public hearing in the matter of rezoning from RP2 to CP2 preliminary development plan, take five oil change, 400 Northeast M291 Highway, Driven Assets LLC is applicant. I need a motion to continue.
Mayor?
Councilmember Demoro?
I move to continue, uh,
To a date uncertain, sir.
To a date uncertain, uh, Item 2023-5932, a rezoning from RP2 to CP2 preliminary development plan, take five oil change, 400 Northeast M291 Highway, Driven Assets LLC applicant.
Excellent, thank you. We have a motion to continue, by Councilmember Demoro, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? I believe it's for sure gonna be after the first of the year before they would come back. All right, seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes nine to zero. And that takes us to public comments. Fowler, R. Curry?
Mayor, I've not received any public comment request.
All right, no public comments. I believe it's for sure going to be after the first of the year before they would come back. And seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes nine to zero. And that takes us to public comments. Fowler, R. Curry?
Mayor, I've not received any public comment request.
All right, no public comments. Do we need a break? All right, let's take a 10-minute recess. Calling this meeting back to order, if possible, I'm not sure that's going to be possible. Uh, where are we? We are past the, we're at the presentation, oh yeah, that's right. We've got a big presentation tonight about the capital improvement plan, no tax increase bond projects. Mr. Elam's going to start us off, it looks like, but numerous people are going to talk to us tonight.
All right, Mayor and members of the council, thank you again. So I'm going to pull this up real quick. On the background and introduction side, I'm going to stay on this slide for just a few minutes, but with the passage of the bond initiatives in April of 2023 of this year, we immediately set to work, kind of working through the plan, if you will, to try to prioritize. uh, to try to prioritize, uh, projects, get them started, uh, start looking at timelines associated with each one of these projects. Because this was, uh, a hundred and eighty-six million dollars, ten years' worth of projects, three different questions, if you, you recall, emergency preparedness, transportation in general, municipal. And so, uh, we had a large team working on that. That large team included a lot of the, a lot of the department heads, the, both the police chief and the fire chief, as well as deputy chiefs, um, myself and, and several other, other folks. Also, uh, as part of that, because of the timing of all of this, these were all included in the Capital Improvement Plan, uh, once the, as an appendix. Uh, so you'll see, we've got a big emphasis on our Capital Improvement Plan kinda throughout this entire presentation and discussion. Uh, cause as we continue to move forward, every one of these projects, uh, are a part of that, that long-term plan. So, um, as we were reviewing, uh, the, the projects, uh, we also, um, at the same time, knew we needed some additional resources, uh, from a staffing perspective. And so you're gonna meet one of our new project managers tonight, Sharon Bloom, uh, who's gonna be handling all, all of our facilities projects as we, we move forward. She's gonna give you a nice update, uh, on where those are. So we're really excited to have her, uh, onboard. Uh, also, we have a new project manager in the IT group, Diana Newman. She was supposed to be here, but she had a conflict, so she's not gonna be here. Cause we do have a, uh, an IT project that is moving forward very quick. So, uh, with that, I'm just gonna go ahead and talk a little bit about the project delivery methods. And you might ask, well, why are we talking about project delivery methods associated with the no tax increase bond issues? Well, because, um, when we look at these projects, there's a number of different ways that they can be brought forward. And, and each project really kinda needs to be analyzed, uh, based off of the type of project that it is, uh, and what the goals of that overall project are. Uh, so this group got together and we went through a lot of the, the transportation projects and the facilities projects. And we talked about different delivery methods. Uh, we even, um, considered a design build, uh, for some of them, uh, through there. But up on the screen, I've got, uh, just a quick graphic, and I apologize for the graininess of the graphic. It was the best one that I had, uh, with a, a designed bid build and a construction management at risk. These are really the two project, uh, delivery methods that we've utilized the most here, uh, at the city. Designed bid build is what I'll say is the traditional project delivery method. Uh, that's where you follow a sequential steps of, you design the project, uh, and then you go out for, for bid with a hundred percent plans, uh, and the contractor bids those plans. And you go with the, kind of the low bid, uh, type situation. And then you're, you can be subject to a lot of change orders. Uh, this process typically takes the longest, uh, of kind of the various delivery methods. But it works really well for a lot of our horizontal infrastructure projects, uh, that we have going out when we, when we have a lot of, uh, design work and specification work done up, up front. Um, and you can see on this- Mouse. You can see here on the design bid build, uh, kind of the contractual relationship, if you will. You've got the architect or engineer and then the general contractor. This is also showing generally in the phase of the project, when those entities are engaged. Um, so again, most of the time, uh, during a design bid build, uh, you're working with the architect or the engineer, absent of any contractor feedback or input, uh, and then that all comes through the bid process. And then they also have individual trade contractors there. Uh, for some of our, um, our facilities projects in particular, we've really been utilizing this construction management at risk project delivery method. And you can see here, it's slightly different, uh, in that there's still two contracts. The, the owner, as in us, be the owner. Uh, we have a contract with the architect or the engineer, uh, as well as a separate contract with that construction manager at risk. And you can see that they get brought into the, the process very early on. Reason for this is, uh, depending upon the complexity of the project, uh, depending upon what the goals are, uh, this is a, this delivery method that allows you to get, uh, updated pricing along the way. It allows you to, uh, kinda speed some things up, uh, as well as takes a little bit of the change order risk out of the end product as you move forward. Uh, so, um, but it also allows the, the owner to keep, maintain control, uh, I guess, of the design process, uh, overall, and, and take in additional feedback. Some of the cons, it still does put, uh, the owner kinda in between the contractor and the architect. Uh, that's no different than in a design bid build project, uh, but this can also save you time, uh, moving forward. The, the last project delivery method, and I just bring this one up because we did consider this, uh, for our, our, our complex projects, uh, particularly like the joint operations facility. We had a couple of pretty lengthy conversations about the best way to bring that project forward. Uh, and a designed build project was different about this is there's only one contracting entity. You get a combined architect and contractor, uh, that will then take it and they will actually take responsibility for both the design and the construction associated with it. Ultimately, we chose not to move forward with this delivery method because it kind of limited the amount of, uh, input and control, uh, that we as the owners, I, I use the collective "we" uh, here, would have had in the design process. Uh, it's more of a, um, you tell somebody, hey, I, I want this building. And then they, they go build it and they put everything in there and, and they have a lot more control over that, uh, with a lot less input. And, um, so that, that was one of the reasons why we kinda threw that one out. It is a fast, a quicker, if you will, delivery method, uh, at times. And it can be used for the right project when the right conditions are, are at play for that. Just wanted to get that primary, so that, that quick touch point. Uh, and then as we go through these projects-
Could you just tell me when that, you said that, that there might be a time that this might be a good way to do it? Can you, can you think of maybe an example where we might consider something like this?
Uh, so I believe we did a design build project for the first phase of Olive and Orchard. Orchard Street, not Olive and Orchard, I'm sorry, Orchard Street. So, um, that was, uh, I, I don't actually know the rationale for the selection of that at that time, do you know?
Uh, we did choose that as a design build process for Orchard. This would be east of Douglas over to Independence. Uh, we felt like it was a way to deliver the project on accelerated schedule, uh, to spend those dollars. It was straightforward from a design concept. We didn't have to do a lot of design, uh, with design alternatives. In the end, I, I, I don't know if we would second guess that process because, um, barriers to design build and, and working as efficiently as you hope is sometimes property acquisitions. And we had to deal with a lot of property acquisitions, which really defeated the, the accelerated schedule, if you will. We, we had pause, we had to stop, we had to go get those. But it did, some of the benefits that it did help is that they took care of those negotiations for the most part.
When was that? Cause that was a great addition, though.
I think that was around 2014, 15?
It really, really made a ma- a huge difference for that area.
So that one was a design build process, could've done a design bid build. Uh, design bid build might've taken a little bit longer, uh, but there's always trade-offs. So you're gonna pay a little more premium with a design build process and you lose a little bit of that control. But we were comfortable with that project losing control because we knew it was just gonna be a two-lane, wider residential collector. Very straightforward design.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, so, um, with that, I'm gonna introduce Sharon Bloom and she's gonna walk through the current status of our facilities project. Now, I will say just one thing before we get started into each one of these project updates. I am really blown away by the amount of work that we've been able to accomplish since these, uh, since this election, um, even leading up to the election. Uh, we have a ton of different projects going on right now and, uh, we've got great staff, uh, that have been really focused on how do we efficiently bring these projects forward? And so we're really excited to have this and, and it's just, um, it's a really great opportunity, uh, to continue to bring all these projects forward. So with that, let me introduce Sharon Bloom.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Hi.
Hi, I'm your new project manager.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'm not gonna bore you by reading these slides to you. Let me tell you a little different stuff about it. Um, this South Police Substation, um, this one is a pretty straightforward renovation. All right, it's not too complicated. We're taking the old Fire Station Five, well, current Fire Station Five, and we're gonna turn it into a police substation. Um, it's, it's not that complex and for that reason, um, we did not use a construction manager at risk. We're doing the traditional design bid build method. We hired, um, an architect who has worked with the police department before. So they're familiar with our standards and goals. This project should go pretty quickly. We're estimating about six months for design work and about a year for construction. And that's probably being generous, you know, it could go quicker than that. Do you guys have any questions about the Police South Substation?
Questions? About the Police South Substation? I know we're excited about having it.
Right?
Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I know we, we've talked about it, um, but what does that look like? I mean, what will that house? Like, how many squad cars, how many officers and on-
Well, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We, we know it's gonna be a place where the residents in that area can come and file a police report or maybe pick up a copy of a report. And they will have some, uh, black and whites down there, um, doing some patrols. But beyond that-
Okay, so a little administrative and street, street officers, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Fire Station One. Now, it's a beautiful facility, especially in this photo. But it's not as nice on the inside as it looks on the outside. This fire station dates back to 1977. And so it, it's getting close to 50 years old. Um, it got a new facade when this building was built, so it would match everything. The insides, however, uh, they've got serious problems with, uh, the electrical equipment. I mean, not just the lights, I mean, the equipment that runs the lights, it's old and failing. Plumbing and sewage problems, a lot has gone wrong. I think it's, uh, getting ready for a new- Is this one getting a new roof? Uh, let me skip that. It might have some structural problems as well at the exit stairs. Um, we did have facility condition assessment of several buildings in 2021. And they said, they told us then, this was near the end of its life. So it's time to do something. Staff is going to relocate elsewhere. We're going to, um, well, different people are gonna move different places. It's not all gonna be just one shift. This one, we're using the construction manager at risk model of delivery so that the architect and the construction manager can look at things together and help us figure out, how is it, how expensive would it be if we did this option? How much would it be if we did this option? What's gonna be the best to give us what we need out of this building? Uh, it's gonna take a lot of, you know, brain power to figure all that out. So we went with that method because it gives everyone a chance to have input early on. We think we'll get the best, uh, best results. This one's gonna take a little longer, uh, because we need to do such, you know, a big evaluation upfront. We're doing a feasibility study to see, you know, how much of this to save, maybe. The design could take a year and construction, maybe a year and a half. So it's kind of a long project. I'm gonna go on to-
Hold on a second, it's a big building.
Oh, sorry, sorry, big building, yep.
I think it's, isn't that like 20,000 square feet? Twenty-eight?
Five, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yep. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you so much for presenting to us tonight. And with each of these projects, and I'm just kinda maybe asking a general question, we're gonna get an update. Will we, will there be a way of kinda tracking, uh, ongoing, almost like a always some kind of spreadsheet, something that helps us know where they're at in the process? And if there's a projected date, target date?
Well, sure, they'll, they'll each have a schedule and a budget, yeah.
Uh, so one of the things that, uh, Michael's gonna talk about at, kinda the end of this is, uh, projects, uh, are part of our Capital Improvement Plan. Dedicated webpages that will have-
And then just, uh, on the, the last two slides, we've talked about design firms being vetted and chosen. So is that, and we haven't been asked to weigh in on that. Is it that because there's a certain threshold dollar amount that we're paying them for the design process that doesn't require our approval, or is that something that will still come to the council?
They will come to you for approval. In fact, I, I believe we have one tonight. So, yeah, we're, we're in the process. So we have RFQs and RFPs all over the place, hiring all these architects and construction managers, yeah.
And then as I look at this, the Station One in particular, uh, you know, ev- everything's on the table. It could be a renovation or a tear down and rebuild is what I'm hear-
Indeed, yes. We wanna be smart about that decision. Sure. And I didn't mention that the, um, the architect that we chose for this job, um, has worked with the Fire Department previously. They worked on stations, I believe, two and three. Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovell.
Yeah, I just, uh, something I think was mentioned in Public Works, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And then you just mentioned it there too, like, because I remember, um, like, these were all on our CIP list. Cause we made a list, if we, if I'm going back, like, we made a list of kind of different buckets and dollar amounts. We also, so like when we were line item these two, we had a dollar amount that was set to those. So I'm assuming, what if it goes over or, you know, like, cause when the bond, was it lump sum on the bond or? I was just trying to figure out, number one, I'm gonna make sure the public knows how we're picking the ones that we're looking at right now. And then how we'll assess, um, you know, what, what the total costs end up being compared to what we predicted they would be or?
First of all, as Mr. Eelm said, all these projects will be in the Capital Improvement Plan, which is an annual process, public hearings, planning commission, city council. And ultimately, you make those decisions when you adopt the Capital Improvement Plan, right? With regard to funding, funding tied to funding years and schedule and, and so forth. Um, the, all the projects thus far have already been adopted in the Capital Improvement Plan. So the, the authorization to spend, as long as it was in this budget year, has already been approved by, by you all for each of these projects that are in that CIP. The scope has been approved. We make sure that the budget and the scope align with what we committed to the public for that April election. Uh, we can't exceed, in total, with, with each question, question one, question two, question three was authorized. Uh, so we have to stay within those buckets. Now, in the end, if we find we've met all of the project commitments and there's still money left over, we didn't spend all of it, then we'll have another conversation about either we retire that or maybe we consider something else. We're still a long ways away from completing all those commitments. If we come to a situation where we're exceeding the total authorization for any one of the three questions and we haven't yet committed or completed all those commitments, we'll be revisiting alternative funding sources to supplement the bonds to make sure that we complete the projects that we committed to complete.
Yep, that's great, I love it, thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, and then this project, um, brings the police and fire together in a joint operations facility. This one, uh, it's not just this building, it also includes Phase Two renovations at police headquarters. So we're doing those together since we're gonna be on the same site. Why mobilize twice? The, the joint operation facility includes communications and emergency operations centers. Uh, we, the Fire Department is gonna move their administration there. So their administration will be right next to the police administration. It will hold an IT server room and it will have redundant utilities because it's also gonna be used, um, for emergency operations. This will be an emergency operations center, it'll have a hardened shell area. It'll also house traffic operations, have training rooms, media rooms, things like that. This one should take about two years to design and build. And it'll be right there on the same site as the police headquarters, right next door. Oh, and we're using the construction manager at risk again because it's complicated. We figure part of it's gonna be underground, it's a small site. We have to figure out traffic and parking and a lot of things. So we need, we need all the, all the brains in one room at the beginning again. Any questions? Any questions?
Makes sense. I mean, we, this is, this is an exciting one for us.
This is exciting, right? They all are, but.
We're going to be cutting edge with this, so.
Right? Yeah. It's good. Well, thank you. I'm going to turn you over.
Thank you.
All right. So one other thing on that last, on the joint operations facility, there is a large equipment kind of package that will be going out separately that's really kind of associated with that project as well. Because that facility's not only police and fire, it's also Public Works Traffic Operations and Traffic Monitoring Systems. So there, if you recall, the bond election questions included a large network infrastructure, cameras, of all of those features as well. So that RFQ or RFP is currently being developed to help with that aspect of the project as well. So this project, the Enterprise Resource Planning System, is the one that Diana Newman is the new ITS project manager that's running this. But this is also a very large, citywide collaborative effort. The Enterprise Resource Planning System is really kind of the backbone of our HR system, our financial systems, and is a really massive undertaking. See the vision and project guiding principles that have been put in place for this. And I know that they have, the team that has been working on this had a very extensive RFP development process, as well as they had great responses for it. I'm going to get the page number wrong, but I feel like it was something like 300 pages for the scope of this, just to give you an idea of the different iterations and what this system actually means to us to be able to function efficiently overall. So they've been working through that process. You know, you can see they had 12 vendor responses, five of them have been selected. And they're looking for the first quarter of 2024 to select that vendor. And then they'll be working on the implementation process for that. And is this a two-year implementation or? Probably good. To be determined on the implementation for this software package. But it's a, it's a major undertaking that's going to really help modernize a lot of our workflows as well. So there's going to be a lot of efficiency gains out of this as well, so.
I mean, this, is this the one, Ms. Whittleman? You don't have to answer, you don't have to come up. But this, this will help with not having to transfer information from one software to a spreadsheet or manually entering things or trying to meet sunshine requests and that, you know, literally take 100 hours to meet one request. This is going to fix all that?
Yes.
Because whenever I came to City Hall years ago and saw how we were having to do some things, I was like, oh, my gosh, this is too much work.
Big modernization and big efficiency gains.
Big step.
All right. And I'm going to turn it over to Michael to talk about the transportation projects.
Yeah, thank you. Talk about transportation projects and I'll kind of wrap up a little bit with furthering our conversation about the capital improvement plan and the process and how we can really update our web resources to show progress and activities, so what's happening with each of these projects. So transportation projects include not just roadways, but also some of our airport facilities like Hangar Two. Hangar Two was already under design prior to the bond election. We were already making our way towards the development of Hangar Two. We were working in partnership with LSR Seven. Hope to have that partnership agreement, cooperative agreement before you next month. I know it's already been to school board for review. So it is in the current FY24 capital improvement plan. The final development plan for this hangar has already been submitted to Development Services, is under review, and we anticipate bidding this project for construction under the traditional design bid-build process here in the next probably six to eight weeks. Construction scheduled to begin next spring and completed by summer of 2025, prior to R Seven's use of their aviation space for their academy. Any questions on Hangar Two, where we're at? That project, though, not funded by NTIB, included, the portion I'm talking about is the east side infrastructure, so some of the utilities, the underground stuff. We'll be going in companion with that. So when you see the bid, it'll include both those things, two different funding sources, though.
I would just say, we've been trying to find a way to partner with school districts in lots of ways.
It's a great partnership.
But this one is actual, you know, it's an actual building. It's not just, it's not just a relationship.
Yeah, so we have 30,000 square feet of hangar space, 18,000 square feet of a shared space, 9,000 for LSR Seven for their aviation program academy, 9,000 for our pilot lounges and shared spaces, a temporary base of operations for our airport staff, too.
Amazing.
Airport property acquisition was another one of the commitments. Couple of properties, I'll say the appraisal's been completed. These were also already in the current FY24 capital improvement plan. So we were proceeding with the authorization that the council granted to begin acquiring those. So offers have been extended and we're in that process right now of negotiations. The, the road projects, there's quite a few of them in tune of $98 million. This is really the heavy lift that Public Works Committee had done just about a month ago. And I encourage you to go see a little bit of that presentation. I think it was about 30 minutes, 45 minutes long. Here's just a snapshot of some of that. But a lot of considerations go into programming these projects. They're not in the current capital improvement plan outside of the sidewalk, which was really just a supplemental fund, an extra $5 million for sidewalk gaps. We already have started the sidewalk gap program using 2017 capital improvement sales tax. So that, that particular program's already in the capital improvement plan. But the rest of these road projects were not. And, and they weren't for a reason, because they are, are all likely a design bid-build process, but they all have very unique challenges, very different schedules. Some of these might be a two to three-year project schedule from design through construction. Some of them might be on more of that eight-year timeline for a much larger project and scope. But in general, what you're seeing down here is a conceptual calendar that the Public Works Committee gave staff direction as we prepare the next capital improvement plan. As you can see, all of the projects, these are all of them that were in the no-tax increase bond issue, will show up in the next CIP. Some of them may not begin until those latter years of that five-year plan, but they will all show up. So all of them will be in there with some level of scoping, description, something that you can track. That will then be added to our capital project webpage. You can see them on a map. And we're in the process of updating that capital improvement plan webpage where you can see all the projects and the activities. We're trying to incorporate some of the project status information that we do a monthly report to Public Works Committee and keeping it more refreshed, more current. Something else we're working on on the CIP webpage is to draw a link back to the past elections information that's out there on the webpage. So if you go to past elections, you'll see the no-tax increase bond election that happened in April with all the information that supported that election. But connecting that then to the CIP, connecting that election issue, if you're looking what happened, go over and just filter a result of NTIB projects and see what is the status of all those projects. So those are some of the updates that we have in mind. Just remind you, you can go to that webpage. While it's a little bit difficult to use, it's not all that glamorous and the aesthetics and mapping functions are still a work in progress, that's something we're working on. But it is a source, a reference that you can go to find information on any of these projects. We're going to bring in the facility projects into that information as well. And then also refer to that monthly project status report. That's projects that are in design, projects that are in construction. And hopefully, we're communicating that in a way that you can draw your attention right to what's happening now, what's happening recent, not just the overall project scope or the overall project schedule. So with that, I have to answer any questions on transportation before we turn this back over.
Is that the map or the graphic you're looking for?
Yep.
That the graphic you're kind of looking for, right?
Very good.
All right. So just wanted to kind of wrap up here with a few next steps. So as we continue to move forward, you know, we, when the bond questions were passed by ordinance, there was a section of that ordinance that did authorize expenditures to occur and then be reimbursed whenever the bonds are actually issued. So working with finance and as well as our financial advisor on the timing of some of these issuances, that we know that there will be kind of several issuances as we move forward. The exact timing and size of those will really depend upon the amount of work that is going to be accomplished in any given year, if you will. So if you think about it, like, right now for FY24, we've got a lot of design work going on, but that'll result in FY25 needing to have a large, larger amount of capital available to spend on the actual construction associated with these projects. So the sizing of that will come back. And in fact, there, there may be an, was it a resolution? Resolution in January authorizing the first portion of these to go out to market, go-to-market resolution is what that would be. And again, we're going to do our best to manage that based off of the need as we continue to move forward. And then every year, the CIP implementation that we've touched on quite a few, few times will, will be updated and be front and center. And we're really excited about these website upgrades so we can have a more consistent updates for the public as we continue to move forward. And there will be several individual project implementation items, such as the Haver Welker contract that is on, on the agenda later this evening. So there will be several items like that that will go to both committee as well as the full council.
Excellent. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just tell me where we are on the acquisition of land for Station Eight? And then, I believe, wasn't it the, the blueprints of, wasn't that the other thing that was approved, I believe? Can you just tell me where we are in that, the design? Yeah.
Yeah, the appraisal's done, the offers have been extended. And that's where our staff's now in communication with property owner. I don't believe we will start soliciting for design qualifications until the property's actually been acquired. That would be my expectation.
Okay, and just because I've not gone through this before, but, so then what's the next step? Like, I know that actual Station Eight wasn't on that bond. So then what's the next step as far as getting Station Eight, getting an actual Station Eight?
Construction of Station Eight. I think we would look for the next opportunity, whether that be a bond issue or a sales tax or any other revenue source. But it wouldn't be out of this ballot measure unless we come to the end of question one, which was emergency preparedness. And we find ourselves with a balance still left to pay. And the council at that time makes a decision to either spend that balance in whichever way they find most appropriate or retire that debt. Otherwise, you're going to have to look for a different source of funds.
Okay, I was wondering how that works, because I know that that wasn't.
I was just going to say that that would be a part of the capital improvement plan process as well, since that, that facility project is not, doesn't have an identified funding source and isn't on the list for prioritization.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any specific timeline? And I don't know if that's a Chief Snyder question, but is there a specific timeline for?
I believe the timeline for that will be dictated by need and as development continues to grow. I know the, the fire department works closely with planning staff for estimates, as well as they do a great job monitoring their call volumes and trying to be ahead of that as much as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pryor, I'd add too, as we remodel or, or completely reduce Fire Station One, that's intended to be, I'll call it a dual company out of that. So as we, as we bring on our resources then, we're always looking at our, our response times and things like that. So there's a lot of data crunching that goes into that to determine when is the appropriate time for Station Eight? Also knowing that the property to the east of I-470 is on the market. And that's another demand that we'll need to track closely. And then as we retire debt from this no-tax increase, right, then we know we, we have that additional capacity. So all those things we'll be paying close attention to as we get closer.
Thank you. I, the reason I'm asking is I feel like after the Discovery Park groundbreaking, we had an influx of emails, people asking about fire and police in that area with Discovery Park. So I just wanted to, and I know Phyllis kind of addressed it via email, but I just wanted to make sure that we were addressing it publicly. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. It says discussion and questions. Councilmembers? Councilmember Lovell.
Mayor, thank you, guys, for the presentation. I appreciate it, especially just kind of, I don't know if that was kind of our full construction method proposal that we talked about, but I do think it brought some clarity and just, you know, just things that I think of. Number one, that, you know, that you guys are doing, you know, being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, utilizing methods that make sense, you know, depending on the type of project so that we're, you know, we're getting competitive bids, but we're also getting good quality, not putting ourselves in jeopardy to go down a method that might cause more problems down the road. So I just, I like to see that transparency, knowing that we're, you know, using the best tools possible to get the right, the right bids, the right contractors, the right design team. And then as far as just kind of the bond initiatives that go out there, you know, one of the things that I know we discussed when we were putting the, putting the bond initiative in front of the taxpayers and just, and maybe this is something down the road, too, but just kind of understanding that if we, you know, if we go issue bonds, you know, what kind of interest rate environment we're in right now. So it would significantly be higher than maybe a low-tax interest rate, because to sell that bond, we're going to need to offer up a significant interest rate on that, you know, what that looks like now versus maybe what we thought before. And just making sure, again, if we get it out in the public to say, hey, we are issuing these, yes, it's a higher interest rate, but, you know, we feel good today and moving forward as retire this debt, you know, it's costing us more money to issue those today than it would in the past. So I know we're doing those things. I just want to make sure we're flushing those out in public and making sure we're being as transparent as possible as we make these difficult decisions. Because the one thing you don't want to do is just stand still. So we have to keep moving forward. And I know we're going to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and making the right decisions financially in a very volatile interest rate environment right now. Thanks, Mayor.
If I may add, if I may add that as well, one of the, kind of the primary considerations for, I guess, the, the speed with moving some of these projects forward is, you know, really the need is driving the need, is driving the way that these projects are moving forward. You know, Station One in particular is kind of on, it's on its last leg a little bit. And then when we start talking about Station One, the joint operations facility kind of gets thrown into that, that mix as well and the opportunity with the substation. So a lot of those, we, we had a lot of discussions about, well, can we delay any of these? Can we, can we have these kind of scheduled out a little bit further? And, and really, the decision was kind of made, it made the most sense to move forward with those projects now, as well as the, just the construction cost environment as well, the swings that we were seeing. Hopefully, now's a good time to continue. Things are leveling off. They're still increasing, but not at the rate that they were. So while interest rates might be a little higher, I think maybe the construction cost inflation will far outweigh that from a savings perspective.
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, gentlemen, for your, for, you guys do a great job. And appreciate you being responsive to our request to talk about delivery, you know, construction delivery, design methods and so forth. And I just echo like the, the thought that even bringing that summary back to us from time to time would probably not be a bad idea, because we probably have to learn by repetition. And at least I'll volunteer that I learn by repetition. So bringing that, you know, why do we choose this design in this instance, bringing it back to us again versus could have been something different? With, certainly, you're not doing that on everything, but with these significant projects, in particular because we're, we put them out for voter approval, as we have, I think would be helpful and helpful for me and I hope for the general public as they participate in our meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Dunning, I think you were going to add to the conversation.
Yeah, since our minds are on no-tax increase bond initiatives, I wanted to revisit 2019 and just give it a quick update on all those initiatives for your information, also recognizing the public pays attention to this, too. So with that no-tax increase bond package, we've completed everything with the exception of two projects. And so I'll go through them. Our network infrastructure priorities, phase one, that's completed. That was fiber and other things. Police and courts building, security renovations, that was phase one, those are completed. Police in-car video replacement, body worn cameras, completed. We just brought on what we call Truck Three. That's our, our third ladder truck. So that was the equipment. But then through PSSD and other sources, we've got the, the personnel then to staff that, so that's in motion. It's, it's in service. So that's completed. The two projects that are coming quick are Station Four and Station Five. So we anticipate first, second week in January, we'll be doing an uncoupling, a ribbon cutting, if you will, for Station Five. And perhaps two, three weeks after that, Station Four will be complete, too. So we're on track to complete all those, that whole list. And then tonight, you pass the PDP for the Downtown Market Plaza, and that ties back to the 2017. to the 2013 no-tax increase bond issue. And the only item we haven't completed out of that was the Downtown Festival and Performance Space, and that will be delivered through that project. So just a quick recap on, on those two no-tax increase bond initiatives.
Excellent, thank you. Well, when I saw some of those streets and such, I remember it brought back a lot of memories of how are we gonna, how are we gonna address these issues, and so I'm, I'm glad that they're in the pipeline. I don't see any more questions. Did a great job, Ms. Bloom. Excellent job, nice to meet you. Thank you for the presentation, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are gonna head, excuse me, going to go ahead and move to proposed ordinances forwarded from committee. Councilmember Lovell, would you start us off with bill number 23-215?
Sir, I move to advance second reading, bill number 23-215, Nordons approving a public service agreement for enhanced public area maintenance services, including but not limited to litter control, weed abatement, sidewalk cleaning, by and between the Downtown Lee Summit Community Improvement District and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-215, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. I think I'm missing one. There we go. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read for adoption?
I move for adoption, bill number 23-215, Nordons approving a public service agreement for enhanced public area maintenance services, including but not limited to litter control, weed abatement, sidewalk cleaning, by and between the Downtown Lee Summit Community Improvement District and the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-215, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number 23-224?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to a second reading, bill number 23-224, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2024-015 for design services for remodel and repurpose the Fire Station Five to Hofer Welker, Tohofer Welker for an amount not to exceed $309,320, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agree, an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to a second reading, bill number 23-224, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Bills, that bill moves to second reading. Councilmember Pryor, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 23-224, an ordinance approving the award of RFQ number 2024-015 for design services for remodel and repurpose of the Fire Station Five to Hofer Welker for an amount not to exceed $309,320, and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to, to adopt bill number 23-224, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Unanimous, it's adopted, thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 23-225?
I move to second reading, bill number 23-225, an ordinance approving change order number two to the agreement with Sands Construction LLC for the Sidewalk Gap Program FY23 Project, Project Number 718, for an increase of $219,880.73 for a revised agreement amount of $2,049,991.23, and to increase the project timeline by 113 days, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-225, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of bill number 23-225, an ordinance approving change order number two to the agreement with Sands Construction LLC for the Sidewalk Gap Program FY23 Project, Project Number 718, for an increase of $219,880.73 for a revised agreement amount of $2,049,991.23, and to increase the project timeline by 113 days, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-225, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It is adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 23-226?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of bill number 23-226, an ordinance approving modification number one to an agreement for professional engineering services for the Olive and Orchard Road and Storm Sewer Improvements, Douglas Street, Chipman Road Project, RFQ number 2022-060, with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for an increase of $119,101.50 for the amended basic services with an amended not to exceed amount of $974,529.50, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-226, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes, or goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor, and I move for adoption of bill number 23-226, an ordinance approving modification number one to an agreement for professional engineering services for the Olive and Orchard Road and Storm Sewer Improvements, Douglas Street, Chipman Road Project, RFQ number 2022-060, with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for an increase of $119,101.50 for the amended basic services with an amended not to exceed amount of $974,529.50, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-226, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 23-227?
I move to second reading, bill number 23-227, an ordinance approving modification number three to an agreement dated February 23, 2021, for professional engineering services for the East Fork of Little Blue River Watershed Storm Water Improvement Project, Soul Source, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Algier Martin and Associates Incorporated, for an increase of $275,600 for the amended basic services with an amended amount of $928,600, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-227, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Hodges, would you please?
I move for the adoption of bill number 23-227, an ordinance approving modification number three to an agreement dated February 23, 2021, for professional engineering services for the East Fork of Little Blue River Watershed Storm Water Improvement Project, Soul Source, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Algier Martin and Associates Incorporated, for an increase of $275,600 for the amended basic services with an amended amount of $928,600, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-227, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's unanimously adopted, thank you. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number 23-228?
Certainly, Mayor. I move for the second reading of bill number 23-228, an ordinance approving modification number two to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services, original RFQ number 2022-030, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Olson Associates, Inc., in the amount of $96,540 for professional engineering services for the I-470 sewer crossing design, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-228, by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Felker, would you please?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of bill number 23, sorry, I'm looking at the other one here for a second. 23-228, an ordinance approving modification number two to the on-call agreement for professional engineering services, original RFQ number 2022-030, between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Olson Associates, Inc., in the amount of $96,540 for the, for professional engineering services for the I-470 sewer crossing design, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-228, by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are, nope, there we go. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Edson, would you please read bill number 23-229?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of bill number 23-229, an ordinance approving a soul-source agreement for professional engineering services for the installation of precipitation gauges by and between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Algier Martin and Associates, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $197,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-229, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It goes to second reading unanimously. Councilmember Edson, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number 23-229, an ordinance approving a soul-source agreement for professional engineering services for the installation of precipitation gauges by and between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Algier Martin and Associates, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $197,000, and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-229, by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember DeMoro, would you please read bill number 23-230?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to second reading, bill number 23-230, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the United States Geological Survey for the installation and maintenance of stream gauges in the amount of $206,200, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-230, by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Mayor Patim Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It moves to second reading. Councilmember DeMoro, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 23-230, an ordinance approving an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the United States Geological Survey for the installation and maintenance of stream gauges in the amount of $206,200, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-230, by Councilmember DeMoro, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. There we go. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Lovell, would you please read bill number 23-231?
You? Did you do this on purpose? This is my park.
I noticed, I noticed that Ms. Fowler, R. Curry is, finds a way to just get people the ones that they're passionate about.
Yeah. I grew up on this park, so, kinda nice to read it. Anyway, I move to advance second reading, bill number 23-231, ordinance approving a deed restriction for Pleasantly Park regarding restrictions limiting the use of the park property, outdoor recreational use, and maintaining and operating the park property consistent with 43 CFR Part 17, and perpetuity, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to a second reading, bill number 23-231, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Did you go to Pleasantly Elementary?
I did. And Pleasantly Junior High.
Awesome. All right, seeing no discussion, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes nine zero. Councilmember Lovell, would you please?
I move for adoption, bill number 23-231, an ordinance approving a deed restriction for Pleasantly Park regarding restrictions limiting the use of the park property to outdoor recreational use, and maintaining and operating the park property consistent with 43 CFR Part 17, and perpetuity, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-231, by Councilmember Lovell, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It's adopted unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Shields, would you please read bill number 23-232?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for second reading of bill number 23-232, an ordinance approving license agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and the Little Blue Valley Sewer District for repairs to the Little Blue Valley Sewer District's existing sanitary sewer line through Eagle Creek Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-232, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Pryor. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. Passes nine zero. Councilmember Shields, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number 23-232, an ordinance approving a license agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, and Little Blue Valley Sewer District for repairs to Little Blue Valley Sewer District's existing sanitary sewer line through Eagle Creek Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute the same.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number 23-232, by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill's adopted unanimously. Good job, everyone. Good job, Public Works Committee. Holy cow, nicely done. All right, we're gonna go to proposed ordinances, first reading. Councilmember Hodges, would you please read bill number 23-233?
I advance to second reading, bill number 23-233, an ordinance vacating a portion of a certain easement located at 690 Northwest Blue Parkway in the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-233, by Councilmember Hodges, seconded by Councilmember DeMoro. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading, thank you. Councilmember Pryor, would you please read bill number 23-234 for second reading?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance to a second reading, bill number 23-234, an ordinance accepting final platent titled "The Village," at New Longview, blocks one through fifteen, and tracks A and B as a subdivision to the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-234, by Councilmember Pryor, seconded by Councilmember Hodges. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. That bill moves to second reading unanimously, thank you. Councilmember Felker, would you please read bill number 23-235?
Mayor, I propose we move to second reading, bill number 23-235, an ordinance approving the cooperative agreement among the City of Lee Summit, Missouri, the Rain Tree Village Community Improvement District, Martin City Partners LLC, and 150 Highway Lee Summit LLC, to implement the Rain Tree Village Community Improvement District.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number 23-235, by Councilmember Felker, seconded by Mayor Patim Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. It does move to second reading unanimously, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for diligently reading and getting us through the ordinances. We are at committee reports. Public Works can just, they don't have to have any more meetings this year, they're, they're good. This year. One more. One more? Okay. No committee reports. All right, council comments. Councilmember DeMoro?
Have a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too, sir. Councilmember Felker?
Well, I can, like to say the same thing, and just in the spirit of the Thanksgiving season, thank, thank you all. It's a great pleasure to serve with you, and it's a, an honor to see the good work of city staff. And I don't, I don't know that the public always appreciates how much work you all put in, so, just, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. They have been cranking it out for the last couple of years, especially this year. Councilmember Edson?
Well, I'm just hoping that during staff roundtable, somebody mentions the, that it's that time of year again for people to sign up for the Citizens Leadership Academy. All right.
All right, very good. Are you also going to mention paying your taxes at City Hall? Okay, I'll let you do that. Any other council discussion? Staff Roundtable?
Almost like we're on the same team. So, yeah, Citizens Leadership Academy. Applications are now on the city's website. Applications for that academy are due by December 22nd. Brief overview of that academy. So, that's where citizens, business owners within the city can sign up for this, this program. And you get a deep dive into all of our, pretty much all of our city operations, and really get to learn behind the scenes how we make all this work. And, and it's, it's a great academy to go through. There's, the sessions, the courses start January 13th, and they go every other week through April 20th. And that's, those entail a Saturday morning from 8:30 to noon. And we, we respectfully request that those that are interested attend all of those. And then, you graduate at the end with a mock city council meeting. So, you get to see what it is like to experience the seat of a council member, elected official. And I know many of you participate in that, in that graduation ceremony, that last session, if you will. I'll note, we, we've, we've done this since 2011, and we've had over 120 graduates that have, have completed all the courses, right? There's a lot of folks that start in, and then, for whatever reason, just can't quite make all the, all the sessions. Many of those, I'm looking at one that's on the, on the dice right now. Councilmember Edson went through it, and I know of at least a couple of other council members. Numerous folks on our boards and commissions. So, it's, I, hopefully, it's a great program that people really benefit from. So, encourage folks to check that out.
And who organizes that and shows up every bright and early Saturday morning?
Right over there, our, our city clerk.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Yep, she does a great job. And we have, we have numerous staff that come in and, and provide those.
Yeah, but they're all morning people. They, they, do they really get credit when they're all morning people?
Okay, and then, moving on to property tax payments. So, it is that time of year, the city here, at our treasury counter, we do take property tax payments. What we're no longer, this, I think maybe the second or third year, where we're no longer able to do adjustments to your tax bill. But if your tax bill is correct, you can pay those here at City Hall. You don't have to go to Jackson County. The city does receive 1% off of that for providing this service. So, it is a great service, that folks can, can pay that bill here. We do have hours that we will be working eight to five, normal hours, but, uh, normal business hours, certainly closed over the holidays. But we will have extended business hours, December 27th through 29th will open at 7:30 for any of the morning folks that want to get up and beat the line to, to pay those. We do have a drop box, too, that if your bill is correct, and you, you're paying by check, you can drop that in a drop box as well. So, those offerings are there as well. I sent some information out, and it's on our website now. The, our Public Works team did a little snowplow naming, and those snowplow names have been chosen, and they're out on the website. A little fun thing we're doing this year. And, and it tells us to stay tuned, because as we incorporate and get into our snow communications, our snow operations, snow fighting, you may see some of those plow names show up and have a little fun in, in some of our messaging there. So, we had over 370 submissions for naming snowplows. Not every snowplow got a name, but our bigger trucks do, do, will all have names as we fight the, the winter season, this season. Last thing I have is just an awareness. We will be closing Third Street just east of Murray Road, where the creek goes underneath the, the roadway there. That's for a sewer, some sewer work that we're doing there. We will close traffic, through traffic, on November 27th. And it'll remain closed.
No.
That's right down your, that's your route to work, Mayor.
No, no, no. How long are you inconveniencing us?
About 30 days, weather permitting.
Oh, my goodness.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah, those on the west side that are down that way, you'll have to find an alternate route.
Can, can I make a motion, Mayor?
Painful progress, as we say, right?
That is painful.
Yep.
That's all right. I already know all the backways.
Yep. And, and we wish all of you.
O'Brien.
And, and the community, happy Thanksgiving. So, thank you very much.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving. But I saw your office, I walked by your office today and saw there were some lights in it. So, thank you for your spirit in your window.
Yeah, Christmas, it's, it's the holiday season, right?
Yep. Very good. All right, I think we're almost done here. Anything else? What time is it? Oh, we finished before nine. It's 8:58. This meeting is adjourned.